Hello everyone. This is a special meeting agenda of the government body of the borough Bloomingdale, Bloomingdale Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. Um, that's 6:00 PM. The vote being taken by the student flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We serve your honor in this instance, one nation under God, with the love and reverence of our beloved country and our representative democracy.
Roll call please.
Mayor Namato?
Here.
Congressman Brocker?
Present.
Congressman Catalano?
Here.
Congressman Hudson? Here. Congressman Schubert?
Here.
Congressman Gaffey?
Here.
We also have our municipal assistant clerk, Amy Beachman, business distributor Michael Stundermeyer, and borough attorney Brett Semper. This is a special meeting was called to pursue the provisions of the public public meetings law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on June 24th, 2025. Notice was also transmitted to the record and start letter on June 18th, 2025. In addition, copies of this notice posted on the Baltimore Board and Municipal Building displayed on the Borough Web Day file of the office of this report on the April Menchel Day. Notice of this portion of the board have remained contingency posts with proper notices have been given to municipal clerk is hereby directed to conclude this statement in a minute's of the meeting. Minutes of this meeting should also reflect the purpose of this meeting as well. As first day fire code, I am required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chamber. The main entrance which you enter through and a secondary exit to the left door and the exit. If there is an emergency or ordering to the exit, thank the two red door, now it appears and out. If there are any questions, please raise your hand. See, I need a motion to authorize the administrative assistant Amy Greenspan temporarily serve the municipal clerk for this council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before we go to early public comment, I just want, um, we're going to go into a early executive session. It should not take too long. So do I have a motion to go to early executive?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you all. Public notes and we're just John Graziano is on the phone. We're going to add him to the meeting minutes. And that is just about this, but he's here. Okay. Okay, John?
Yep.
Okay. Can I motion up early public comment reserve for Jen Dyers?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up? And we're going to have a public portion of the rest of the discussion.
First of all, I don't think this according to files, even though I thought you had him on the phone.
I terrified of my attorney and yeah.
I remember recall the files saying no.
He's, he's, Mr. Graziano is permitted to so long as he listens to the discussions vote on any items that are before.
The files said you can't, that you can't, that you cannot participate for your phone. That's always been the files.
I, I can't say that I'm aware of that little room. So, and we had numerous meetings during Zoom.
That was Zoom meeting. That was, that was different time. Okay. Um, are you planning to permit public comment for the conservative amended sale agreement?
Um, I think it's just the ordinance.
The ordinance is where the public, so if you want to question that comment?
Oh yeah, why not the amended sale agreement?
Yeah, that, that's, um, show it to the resolution that, that basically mirrors the ordinance and it would, um, result in the total purchase price of the $6.7 million and it would include, uh, the potential for a industrial type of property up to 320,000 square foot. Uh, it may include as well above that price, a hotel that's constructed at a maximum of 127 units. And it also brings the total unit count for the project from 426 to 500 units, but that, those additional units are all age restricted units. It also calls for six acres of the property to be restricted from any development. So, and that's, that's out of the 12 total additional acres that are being sold or included in this sale, but six of it will be green or be restricted permanent as well. That's those are the material terms of the contract and how it will be set up here. If the warehouse or industrial park or whatever type of use is on the property for industrial up to 320,000 square feet is not developed on the site, then the, the price would be reduced or correspond with, um, a price per square foot. So only 160,000 square feet are actually built, then, um, the, the price would be a million dollars as opposed to the should build. If nothing's ever built, then there would be no additional dollars that would be spent if.
Then we took the 4.7?
Yes.
Yes.
That part has not changed. When this other stuff came up with the industrial portion of it, that was going to be an additional, what was 320,000 square feet? It was additional to the knowledge to allow them to build 320,000. But what we did to get to the lesser amount, we just took the 2 million divided to the 320,000, it came up to 6,025 square foot. So they build 100,000, we get 6.25.
Okay, then also recall, see, and I can't spike your hand, if the hotel is supposed to own 100 units.
No, it's a, it's a minimum of 100. And the reason it's a minimum of 100 by law, state law, I think it is, the hotel will be allowed to have a liquor license through the state. It's a maximum of 125?
127.
127 in case there is.
I told you you have extra licenses available in town.
It's different. It falls under a different section of liquor licenses. Whether you build a hotel, the hotel owner can apply for a liquor license. They have to have a minimum of 100 rooms to pack up the need for a liquor license.
Okay, I also question that, um, as far as the hotel is concerned, it said that if it can truck, if you can construct a hotel, but then in the ordinance, it goes on to say that with a contingency of an additional 330,000 we pay to the borough in the event that an extended stay hotel is constructed.
Right.
They're two different things. Just a hotel.
There's a regular hotel and extended hotel. Extended hotel, I can just give you an example of if I get transferred to an area.
Oh, I know what it is, but I'm just questioning the wording.
But we, we, if the hotel is built, we get an additional $330,000 for allowing it, but they still have to go through the process, the pregnant words and all that stuff. This is these, the hotel and the industrial portion, as I have said, in our redevelopment plan, they are permitted uses. They might not ever be built, but it can be built. All right? So these, we're just making avenues. If somebody wants to come in and build a hotel on that redevelopment plan area, it's allowed. They can't put a hotel on Main Street. That's, that'd be a question.
No, what I'm saying is if you look at the ordinance, the bottom of the page says whereas in the event MNT Realty Partners construct a hotel site, addition 330,000 dollars consideration we pay to the borough, a hotel site.
Right.
Then it goes on to say.
Which is part of that property.
Right. In section one, that with a contingency of an additional 330,000 we pay to the borough in the event that an extended stay hotel, a hotel and extended stay hotel are different.
They're different.
So why, why is one say hotel and the other says extended stay?
Is that just a?
Yeah, I mean, you want to make sure that on a technicality, you could build either. So it could be either, either one. If either one is built, the borough needs to get paid.
Maybe that should be stated. Maybe that should be stated because it's, it's, it's kind of.
What's one you need?
I'm reading the ordinance.
The ordinance says.
Okay, John. It does specifically say.
First page.
Both there are.
Just has hotel.
And extended stays are.
You could say hotel, including extended stay, just for clarification, if you want to amend it, it's, it's fine. The, the object is to make sure that if a hotel is built, the borough gets compensated. So I, it's.
So if you just wanted to change. Extend the same both types of basis.
Extended.
One match the other.
Yeah.
I might also question that, this is, I guess it's still in the ordinance that, um, that you're saying that the land for the DPW is no longer needed for public use, but you've got people parking trucks all over the town and says putting them on a DPW property. So how can you say it's no longer needed?
You can probably answer why that.
Some of the 12 acre, we some of.
Now we're talking about why do the P W guys are taking trucks off?
Why they don't use the property anymore?
That's the question, why don't use the property? Some 12 acres, we talking about the 1.8, 1.2.
No, no.
12 acre would never be a parking lot except on the top of the mountain.
Except on top of, we have to go up there.
Then why was it supposed to be, why was it said it was going to be used for DPW?
No, the section of the property that's going to be used for the DPW, just put a frame of soul shed. All right? The old soul shed was partially on at that time Tilkon property. We did a landlot adjustment, so now we incorporated the soul shed and behind that into the DPW lot is in that lot. We expanded the DPW property to make sure the soul shed fit and the work we had to do behind it. So now that's incorporated into that building lot. So that's basically what we did.
That's, that's.
Which was 2.?
1.35.
4.35 by eight acres?
Yeah. And then the remaining property, the remaining 12 acres is not needed for public use. It's, it's, it's not utilized by, by the borough. It was obtained by basically landfillation or finbar, so there's no other utility for it, but to be transferred and developed or sold.
So there's no development, no, how they're doing is building to 500 units while we're getting a 4.7 unit.
Correct. Correct.
Whereas in 2015, we're going to have it at 360 units.
Correct.
We estimated, we were going to get 10 minutes.
It was estimated back then.
10 years.
We get 10 minutes, but as I said at the last meeting, is if Tilkon went in there and did what they normally do, blast rock and it was made, what we call, what, well, Tilkon can't do, they don't make things buildable. They blast rock and they take it. So that was.
They do make things buildable. They did for the fire department. They did for your firehouse.
I'm just telling you their norm, but they told us their normal thing is not to build to what a developer wants. The fire department, they just took the rock out. They didn't take it all out. That's why the firehouse is not, um, parallel with Uptown. They had to put it sideways because they couldn't take the rest of the rock out. So they'd save us $750,000 by coming into Blaxton and make it for the developer to come in and make it buildable. The developer did that. Tilkon just took the rock in the back out. All right? I remember back then because Bill Steen Street got it done through, through Tilkon before our time up here. But Tilkon donated the property, paid us 2.4 million for a hall road, so you can add that to the 4.7. So they can take the rock from there, from whoever blasted, the developer, back into Tilkon, and then they crush the stone whenever they get, and they give us 77,500 tons back as part of the deal. That stone has a worth, $19 times 77,500 tons. So that's, that has a greater, a great value. All right? Um, yeah. So Bloomingdale, we get that stone. They're going to give it to us as we need it.
They donated the property because you said Tilkon blasted it. They didn't do it for any other reason but that?
Well, whatever they did, we'll be got a piece of property and we're hopefully going to be able to get some tax revenue out of it.
4.7 million.
That's the price, the sale price.
Now, if we, if they put a hotel up there and if they put, um, the hotel is separate from what you had said, 1.4 million, is that going to be part of the pilot program too?
Right now, that has not been negotiated. There's no pilot on the hotel portion at this point. That will be decided if they build a hotel. You want a? Amy Maxman?
Matt's at 77 Charles Street. Um, yeah, I'm a little bit of an idealist. Um, I love this town. Just curious, the 12 acres that Tilkon, that we got from Tilkon, you said it was going to be six that was not going to be.
It's 44 acres total that we got, about round numbers?
Okay.
Okay. So we separated, there's 12 acres that sits behind DPW, which is, so that lands up there and whatever. Okay. The project for the residential will be to the left, where if you're facing, you're in the DPW, where the houses came down, that's where the residential would go. Behind that residential there, to the left of that corner of that property, there's seven acres of property. We're keeping seven to six acres green. All right?
Six acres.
Six acres green, they can't do anything with that. So that's going to stay as it is. So the 12 acres is part of the, the bigger piece?
That's part of the bigger.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, I, and I understand everything comes down to money. I, I get that whole point, but there's nowhere where that they would be able to build for the residents, couple of extra fields, uh, a municipal complex, residential complex, you know, some sort of a senior recreation center. There's nothing that, it's all residential, it's all been taken out. I just.
It's not taken out. They just, they got to build to what they, they sell. And to be honest with you, you'll never make a field on top of a rock.
But even if you, yeah, that's what he was saying before. You can't lay down your turf, you can't put things down there and make a field on top of it, an astroturf field. But that was my question, is just so much has been going on here and it seems like the residents and a lot of residents are upset that nothing's being given back to us, you know, and they, they're looking for something, so.
Well, I, I'll disagree with that. We've done so much work on our fields. I mean, we just put a million, two playgrounds in, okay?
That, I know.
We're doing another one down at Tlaser. Our fields are the best fields in the area. We take care of them. They're used every day.
Yes, you're right. You mean more than anyone. I understand that.
Hopefully, hopefully, just wait just one second. Hopefully, when a county builds a park on the horse park, from what I was told, they're going to meet with three towns around it and see what we want there. That's where we should put fields if we're able to do.
Absolutely.
Will they put turf? I don't know. Usually when this comes to county parks, they like to do things natural. But you know, I know, I can tell you up in, um, Garry Mountain and, um, Rifle Camp Park, Garry Mountain especially, there's, there's, there's fields in there.
Oh, yeah. We're up there all the time.
So that is my long-term vision.
No, our fields, trust me, as head of the rec, I know how nice our fields are and I know they can utilize. And that's why I'm looking for just a little bit more, since something was being done, could we add more? Could we add more to it? Could we add to something for something more, so?
I mean, I told you, my only dream was to build a rec center. I mean, that's, we should have a real true rec center.
Should be a community center with both the seniors and us, our both, are both in the same.
Tribute.
And everybody can do.
But I believe it really should be closer to, and I always said it should be at a school field, so when you're doing a rec program, you run the stuff in, the kids can go out for a summer rec program, it should be up on the map somewhere. It should be where they can go out and play the field and have organized, organized stuff going on for the kids. And seniors too, they like to walk the walking path over there, you know?
Yeah, um, for sure. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ben.
And Mayor, I think it's important to note that if, if the project is developed to fruition, the minimum payments would be about a million four on the residential.
Agreed.
So there's that, hopefully, you could always, at your discretion, direct that to, you know, improvements in recreation and things like that. Like I said, on the site, it doesn't seem to fit as well, but somewhere else in town, that's in your budget.
I mean, I do have a question. Um, with the, the pilot money that I mentioned that you are getting, um, we are getting, um, is that what of that are we giving to the school? What, what are we giving back?
First of all, we have to get the contract, right? Get this all done. We've been, and I think Mike and Dave have a meeting with the school on Thursday. On Thursday. We have to figure out what's going to happen with the schools. We have no plan. I, I always told the school, and I've said it probably here, until I have a signed contract and what we're going to get, how can I tell you what I'm going to give you? If anything, it will be low help to school. We said that for the addition, that'd be a good part of it and try to help them out as much as we can. It's our job. All right? It all comes from the same people. So, and I know people think pilots are the dirty word, all right? But people will not build anywhere. And you can ask any other town. Pilots are the way developers are building. They want a pilot to lower their taxes, but in the long run, if you say no, you get zero dollars. So it doesn't really make a difference if we take in 1.4 million dollars in taxes from that property and we utilize it for our taxpayers or the school gets. School has to be utilized for our taxpayers. It's one bill that comes to your house. It's broken out, but it's one bill. We all have to pay that total bill. Pay my taxes on my house, it's $14,000, I was on a small free better than that. I mean, I pay the same rate as everybody else. But if we can control our taxes here, which we've done a really good job with over a good time that I believe since we've been here on the municipal side, um, we're giving back to the taxpayer. Look what we've done as a council. Previous councils from, from Gray and I got it in 2012 until we are here today, all the stuff that we accomplished in town. I mean, I see a number of compliments about the, the, the new playground and why being the VA going out and finding grants and doing all that stuff to pay for that, so there is no cost for taxpayers. We're doing a playground down at Tlaser, and if we get the, we're able to work that money, there'll be no cost to the taxpayers.
Yeah, but I.
Put the roads out.
I get a lot of, like, some of the feedback from, you know, I, the feedback I get is that they're in this town because they like it and they're okay with paying the taxes and.
No, I don't think that.
Well, you know, and we're, we're, they're paying a lot of taxes now and, you know, maybe not, whatever, 10 years from now, but as long, you're saying that there's not going to be a lot of children at this particular cost and then the other ones that we have to build, it just seems like.
I just said it wasn't going to be a lot. You asked me about the 55 or older. That's what you asked me about. And I said the 55 or older, in the 55 year old development, they don't allow kids. All right? I just, I completely did the example, my parents lived to live down in Shore when they were, when they were alive, and my sister lives there, they're 55 or older. Their grandkids may come for a certain amount of time, then they have to get out. It can't be permitted residents in the 55 or older the way it's, it's set up, and that's the way this is being set up. They have to have their own entrance, they have to have their own stuff. They can share a pool or stuff like that, they can do, but they have to have their own away from the kids.
Mr. Mayor, just a, did we close early public?
No, I'm going to get up again.
No, not yet.
Sorry.
Not yet. It's okay, it's okay, we're talking about this, that's what we're. That's fine, yes.
Okay, I, I'm a little concerned, a lot concerned, that the, um, pilot for just the housing has been the 1.4 million.
Right.
Okay, and in 2015, let's just look at, I'm sure the trade value of this property is going to be worse than it was for the 360 units. And at that point, the amount of tax revenue is expected was 1.8 million, and that's the 2015 tax rate. Now, the, our tax rate now is even higher. So we're losing now using the pilot program, probably like that 500 grand.
It might be, but if you're talking record taxes versus the pilot.
Correct.
But as I said before, and I've talked to many developers, all right? The developers, when they come in, we got, ask today, about another area in town that somebody likes to be developing about a pilot. Developers will not build in a town unless you offer a pilot to them. So either you don't build, which that's what you want, you want, and you get zero, or you have to work with them to get something in. I think we're doing really well at 1.4 million when this is constructed and we're going to be getting X and a half, how much beforehand?
It'll be 100,000, $25,000.
A quarter, as it stays green, if it stays with trees before they build, until it's done, we're just, we're going to start collecting money for that too.
But the 1.4, that's the minimum. That's the minimum payment for the pilot. That's not a fixed number. So that only comes to about $2,300 a month in rent. If the rent exceeds that on average, let's say, and nowadays, right, that number, let's just say it's $2,800 a month, then that number's going to be very close to a million eight or $2 million, whatever it might be. It, it will always be able to go up if the rents increase. Important thing about before is if for some reason, whatever happens in the market, there's a problem, the borough's guaranteed that payment. So, so that's, that 1.4 would just be a minimum.
That's the good news. Anyone else? Seen no one, a motion opposed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, just to remove some of the public comments and what we discussed, could we re-enter executive session for a brief moment, a moment, just a, a motion to enter, re-enter executive session for a brief moment?
Some moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Be under contract negotiations.
Contract negotiations. Can you guys just step out for a little bit, please?
It'd be very brief.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, special business. Second final reading, public hearing, ordinance number 15-2025, authorized on sale of property noted as block 5105, lot 1401. Motion, motion please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the public, and copies will be developed to the public, so that motion we made that we referred to.
Have a motion to read by title.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
An ordinance to the Borough of Bloomingdale and the County of State and State of New Jersey authorizing the sale of property known as block 5105, lot 14 dot 01.
Have a motion open up public hearing.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up?
Again. Again? I'm wearing my welcome coil, yeah? And then I'm the A6 campaign. Now, have you changed the, um, the hotel and the extended stay hotel, the ordinance?
Uh, before final quote, yes, I would correct that.
Let me close public hearing, then I'll do my court dossier. Okay, can I have a motion? Anyone else? Seen no one got a motion opposed public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, we're going to have a motion for a dossier, but before we do that, we're going to amend it to, to reflect.
That it would say a hotel or an extended stay.
Okay. Sort of, in both sections.
Right.
Okay.
And that would be accepted first, just the amendment, the amendment.
Go on that first?
Yeah, just all in favor of the amendment.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the amendment to change, to change from, you know, two sections to make a hotel or extended stay?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do a motion for adaption.
Some move.
Second.
Brockers?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano? Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
No.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Okay. Item B, consideration of amendment sale agreement between Bloomingdale and NNT Realty Partners. Do I have a motion?
Someone.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mayor, before the roll call, may I ask just for amendment that states that the mayor and she'll have the right to make non-substantial changes to, to the agreement, not material terms such as price and things like that, if there's any, you know, minor language changes to the agreement before it's executed, that the mayor be authorized? And that just be as part of the, the resolution approval as amended?
I'd make that motion, especially in consideration of the discussions that we had in executive.
Second.
Any of them here?
Yeah, just for, just for the amendment.
So we have a motion?
Dave.
Dave seconded.
Dave seconded. Okay. All in favor?
Dave, you have your motion for the.
Roll call, for the resolution.
You had a motion. You had a motion, it was amended.
Yeah, no motion.
Today, you can just have, you're up to the roll call, second, the resolution.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano? Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
No.
Gaffey?
Yes.
Brockers?
All right. Thank you all. Have a motion up on big public comment?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just got to get you a chair.
I know, really, could you?
You just sit closer.
I am very close. No, I like that, I like the view. Since this agreement has been made, I don't just know if there's anything that was an executive session that was discussed, that was, that addressed. that was discussed, that was, that address was changed in this.
Uh, no, there's, at this point, no. It's just a question for clarification. And again, if there is a change, it won't be a substantial change, not like any material terms or anything like that. Discussion about the contract negotiation.
Anyone else? See, no one to motion to close?
Someone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any have motion to, motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming out, I appreciate it.